Call this board meeting to order, please arise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you take roll call, please?
Mrs. Toby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Mr. Tietzschwart? And we always start with the reading of our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we also need to approve the agenda for this evening. Need a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Passes five to zero. Matt, student achievement?
All right, thank you. Okay, for this evening, I have from Colrain Elementary, 251 students earned the badge bash for taking ownership of their badge for the entire year and not needing a replacement, which is part of our Colrain Elementary pubis and sore expectations around taking ownership. These students earned a free kitty-sized Kona ice and time for music games, activities, and fun during the school day. Congratulations to all of our earners. Struble Elementary, Struble students in grades three, four, and five had the opportunity to participate in the 25th Annual Flying Kid, Flying Pig Kids Marathon. Participating students ran one mile at each of our 25 morning run club practices leading up to the Flying Pig 26th Mile Event. On May 6th, students completed their 26th and final mile downtown at the Cincinnati Riverfront. They ran alongside students from all over the Cincinnati area. This completed the 26.2 mile distance of marathon. This special one-mile event allowed participants to run on the actual Flying Pig course and cross the real finish swine to earn a medal. The Struble team had 123 students, families, and faculty members participate this year. The weather was great and it was fun seeing so many students and families come out for the event. At White Oak Middle School, 7th grade White Oak Middle School students Olivia Pegram and Evelyn Stein qualified for the Power of the Pen State Tournament. Olivia and Evelyn qualified for the tournament by placing 5th and 8th overall among riders at the regional tournament. The state tournament takes place on Friday, May 19th, at Ashland University. They will be competing against the top 10% of all Power of the Pen riders throughout the state. Good luck tomorrow. Corrin High School, on Saturday, April 29th, the Corrin High School Chamber Singers received straight superior ratings at the state contest, the highest rating possible. This is a huge accomplishment for them and the school and has not happened in many years. Congratulations to this group. Congratulations to the following students for making the commitment to the United States Military. They're dedicating themselves to the service of our country and for this, we are thankful. Sergeant 1st Class Bischoff of the Ohio National Guard, Peyton Rhodes. United States Navy, Braden Miller Gable. Army Reserves, Brahma Maboji. United States Marine Corps, Alexander Robers. Best of luck and congratulations to the following student athletes for making the commitment to play at the collegiate level. We wish you nothing but the very best. Kalani Broadnax, Lincoln University Soccer. Marius Campbell, Terrace State Community College Soccer. Jameer Carpenter, Hocking College Football. Alexis Colbert, Mount St. Joseph University Cheerleading. Ashon Hopper, Hocking College Football. Adriana Alonzo, Mount St. Joseph University Cheerleading. Isabel Snyder, University of St. Francis of Illinois Bowling. Anthony Tate, Iowa Western Community College in Football. Carson Toby, Mount St. Joseph University in Baseball. Congratulations to the following students for having perfect attendance this school year. Perfect attendance is defined as having no absences, tardies, or early dismissals for any reason. These students attended 100% of all classes on their schedule. The seniors listed are Jeffrey Evans, Gabriel Howard, Raven Hunter, Elise Cre, Raymond Lynn, Autumn Van Drill. Juniors are Lilian Belonger, Brady Bigner, Sahan Hosder, David Lane, Aaron Lewis, Lydia Manus, Austin Selmeier, and Bethany Strecker. Sophomores are Joseph Fout, Noah Gears, Natalie Greenwell, Duncan Wyatt. Freshmen's are Elise Manus and Raiden Sock. At Northwest High School, congratulations to Josh Paris Townsend, Elias Anderson, and Andrew Brock for being rewarded with the 2023 STEM Access for All Scholarship at the University of Cincinnati. All three students successfully participated in an entry-level engineering course and worked side-by-side with industry partners from Siemens to learn and develop skills related to NX software. This summer, the students will have many opportunities to expand the skills developed this semester and provide a great model to other program participants. Following Northwest art students won at the state level of the PTA Reflections Competition. Samantha Craven won first place, the Award of Excellence, and Divya Darje won third place, the Award of Merit. Their work will go on to compete at the national level. There will be a recognition event on Wednesday, April 26th, starting at 5:30 at the Hamilton County ESC. That already happened last week, last month. Antonio Ajaites Chaparron received a Fulbright Scholarship to the Art Academy of Cincinnati as a result of the strength of his portfolio. Antonio is in his second year as an APR student at Northwest High School. Congratulations to our BPA national competitors who competed in Anaheim, California. Mike Jones, Michael Brokert, Shakila Graham, Noah Denson, Carter Berg, and Hannah Childs. Congratulations to all Northwest High School students who received awards in our Underclassmen Night Ceremony held on May 16th. Students were awarded certificates in the following categories: Grade Level Top 10, Honor Roll, Perfect Attendance, and PTA Art Reflection. That's what I have. Thank you.
All right, let's give all the students a round of applause. Thanks, Matt.
Was your son one of those that he mentioned?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Not the perfect attendance.
Well, that's okay.
Butler Tech, up there, Jim?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Monday night, we had our graduation down at the Cintas Center, and 750 kids went through graduation in just about two hours, so they did a great job and everything was fantastic. And one of our students from Colrain was the emcee for the program, and she did a great job. Then we had our board meeting on Tuesday. We finally got the $15 million that we got from the Butler County Commissioners. What that was, that was money that was left over that they dished out to different companies and that you had to apply for the money. And we got $15 million of the 75 million. And what we're going to do is we're going to build an advanced manufacturing on Miami-Hamilton campus. We're going in with those guys and we're going to build that there. And then we're going to add to the aviation facility up in Middletown, actually where Matt's son went up there, the aviation program. So we're going to add on to that. And then the only other thing is we're going to go with Cincinnati State. We're going to go in business with them, and we're going to do green engineering program at the biomedical there, the red building on Cincinnati Dayton Road, if you've gone by there. And we applied for a $20 million grant to build on to there. It was money that the governor put $200 million out basically for schools that are having tough time with getting, because we've had to turn, we turned away 1,200 students that applied to go to Butler Tech last year. So the problem is, we don't have enough facilities, and so we've applied for this grant from the governor. So we should know something in the next two months or so when they decide who gets the money. And it's throughout the whole state of Ohio that the different schools can apply for these grants. And then just one other thing, it's first time ever in Butler Tech's history that there was a kid from Lakota East, he got the Presidential Scholar, which is, there's only, he was one of 60 in the whole country that gets this scholarship. And that's the first one that came through Butler Tech in the engineering career. And that was it.
And I was commenting too on the, I don't know if these are available to everyone, but the amount of-
There are actually online.
Oh, good.
You can pull up Butler Tech and you can get those.
Okay.
The student success.
Just the amount of our district's students that are in here is, that's awesome.
Yeah, there's a lot of Northwest students that are usually in there each month.
Yep. Any legislative question?
Yeah, Nicole, a couple things. First of all, there's a couple Senate bills that easily passed that will be moving into the House and probably will pass there too, because the Republican Party runs both the House and the Senate. The first is Senate Bill 11, which greatly expands the voucher program to four times the poverty level. And I want to give you some numbers. In Ohio, there's 1.6 million public school students, and right now, there's 57,000 voucher students. So it's really a small percentage, but by increasing that level that much, you know, for every student that goes and takes a voucher, that's one less that we get. And they're going to currently, I believe it's currently, the maximum voucher for K through A is $5,500 per year per student and $7,500 per high school student. So that's a lot of money. And they also, in the same bill, are going to increase the homeschool tax credit from 200 to only 500. It's a significant increase per student, and that's in committee. And right now, there's 50,000 homeschooled students in the state of Ohio, so that's something we'll be watching. And secondly, House Bill 6 passed the Senate by vote of 26 to 7. I'm glad to see this. The bill would prohibit the STRS or the state retirement system from basing any investment decisions for the primary purpose of influencing the environmental, social, and corporate governance policies. That's that woke policy where companies are not investing in other companies that aren't woke, if you will. And so it's good to see that the state of Ohio is making sure that STRS and their millions and millions and millions of dollars are not being put into this woke craziness that's going on right now. And beyond that, not much else that has been voted on.
All right, thanks, Chris. Good information. Do we have any reports from employees?
Not tonight.
All right, Community Communications, we do have one. Just a reminder that this is a public meeting held in public, but not a public meeting for participation with the board. Each person is given three minutes to speak. Tonight, we have one, Mr. Rich McBay.
Good evening, Board.
Hi, Rich.
Thanks for listening.
Of course.
I'm here tonight because, following up, I was in, February I was here in front of you, and I was talking about the evaluation that you'd just completed for the superintendent. And I don't want to go back over the points I made then, but a couple of things were in that were that he needed to show some more balance between his strengths and the things he needed to work on. Importantly, I said it wasn't clear in the evaluation what priorities you guys really felt the district needed for improvement. There were a bunch of things listed, you know, I'll give credit to the board. You all participated in this thing, and there were lots of comments, and you weren't diverged in your evaluation, which is all positive things to see, and that's encouraging. But what I didn't see was a sense of priority, and I think that's important. We have so many things going on in the district, as you well know. You sit in front of these boards and you see what comes in front of you. There's just a lot of mechanics and mechanisms that go on in running a district, so I appreciate that. So it's important to set the right kind of priorities around things that you want to change. When I spoke to you last, I said the important thing, the next important thing beyond the evaluation was to get at developing the work plan that associates the input that you gave to the superintendent. And I point out that the superintendent's evaluation really is a statement around what is the current state of the district. So this is the one way that the board can impact the district directly. You know, in these meetings, when things come in front of you, you know this better than I do, most of the things are cooked before you get to, and I don't say that in a negative way. We follow a process. Administration puts things in front of you, and you vote I, 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 and we get five I's all the time, you know, and it takes up a lot, it takes up a lot of your effort. I understand that, and I appreciate that. But I wanted to follow up on where we are. So in early April, I sent a request, open records request, to Treasury Wells, and they responded like they always do. But I didn't get a response until the end of April, you know, and that's kind of unusual. Usually, I get quicker responses. Team does a good job getting at things, and I appreciate that. Well, what I was requesting, and it was pretty clear, I said, I'd like to see the work plan that's been put together to support the evaluation that the board has made for the superintendent. And I got the response that that document doesn't exist. Well, I understand that. When you make an open records request and documents don't exist, staffs don't create them. But it was pretty clear in my request. Request was, what are we doing about the evaluation? So I want to step back here a little bit and say, these performance evaluations are put in place across the education and business to bring about some improvement. That's what we're trying to do. Now, we're not checking the box to just say that we've done it. What we want to do is see some improvement. And the performance appraisal is the first step in the process. You get together, you get on a common page, you share ideas, you know what's going on. The second step is, well, what's the plan? Okay, what are we going to do with the input? That responsibility falls on the person who's been evaluated. They developed a plan, the team evaluated and looked at it and said, yeah, that makes sense. Get off and get after that, and we think that you're on the right track.
Your time's just about up. I don't want to cut you off, but just-
Okay, if you'll give me a couple of minutes, I'm almost done here. I was going to say, so that's the second step. The third step is, let's review it, you know, let's review that on some periodic basis. How are we doing against the plan? So here we are, we're six months into the evaluation, okay, and we don't have a plan. And the school year is almost over. Now, I understand there's a huge number of things that are going on, and I appreciate that. But what you need to do, I think, is to set a priority around what it is that needs to be fixed. And I know you have interest on this. I read the comments in the discussion that went on around the transportation discussion. You've been asking, what are the root causes for these staffing issues? What are the root causes around the morale issues that we have? Those things need to be defined, and I think that's, my vote is, and you have to get your own vote, but that's got to be the priority for this administrator. And also dealing with, I think, some of the morale issues, and you can get more of this, is really tied to the fact that I think teachers don't feel supported in many different ways, and we've heard that before, but I think a lot of it's tied to the kind of behavior that we're seeing in classrooms and on buses. We can't expect our educators to be dealing with so much dysfunctional behavior. So I urge the board to work forward with the superintendent, you know, we're up, six months have passed, and the clock's still running. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent's consent items.
All right, so for tonight, we have some of our normal items. We'll start with Human Resources.
Good evening. We seek approval for the following items: 25 resignations, two retirements, 13 initial appointments, eight change in status, approval of all of our employee contracts, various supplemental items, and updated job descriptions.
We have one donation from the University of Michigan to the Colrain High School class of 2024 for survey participation. We also have several contracts for curriculum, PD, SWOCA, PBIS, Special Education, and our annual Hamilton County contracts.
Good evening. I'm asking for approval this evening for our handbook. So I've got the 2324 Grading and Reporting Handbook, the Credit Flexibility Handbook, the Field Trip Handbook, and also for our 2324 Instructional Fees.
The superintendent recommends the board approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
Hold on.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one thing, Nicole, that I had a question about. In looking at the resignations, I was just really kind of surprised at how many intervention assistance, MD assistance, just assistance, assistance, assistance. And when I go by White Oak Middle School now, I know there's new programs and that, but I used to ride my bike to school when I went there, when it was White Oak Junior High, and I know exactly how many cars were there, because we would always park at the end of the cars, and there's double the number of cars, and it's a smaller school. And I'm just wondering, how many of these people, oh, and English is a second language too, how many of these are funded through state grants, and how many of these are what taxpayers are paying for?
So some of our assistance are through title funds. So title funds come through for each building based on their poverty level, and the buildings decide how to allocate those funds. Sometimes, they are using them for reading specialists, math specialists, and sometimes it's for assistants who work directly in classrooms with kids. And so some of the assistance are there. A lot of our MD and ED assistance are related to special education costs, and so those are funded through the general fund because we have to fund the needs of the students that we educate. So it's a mix.
Okay. Yeah, it just seemed like a huge amount, and I know we had some changes there with the layoffs that we had with, were some of these folks paid with the ESRA funds?
Anyone who was in our classified, they were able to be moved into other open positions. So none of our classified staff were riffed based on that because of the reduction in ESRA funds, but some of them were moved into other positions that kept them employed with the district but wasn't the position they did last year. And so there may have been some people who may have chosen to go elsewhere because they were moved into a position that they didn't necessarily choose, but it maintained their employment.
Okay, well, just, you know, it was just a question I had in reviewing the list because it was rather lengthy.
Yeah, in this time of the year, we normally do see longer resignations because this is when people are moving jobs. Education is cyclical, so our teachers have until July 10th, if they're looking for other employment, to find that and resign from the district. So this is that season where May and June, the resignations get longer.
More, okay. Well, thank you, dear.
Looking at the past few years, is our number similar? Have we seen a spike or less? Yeah.
It's fairly similar, yes.
Okay. I already had it written down. And over the summer, we have hiring fairs, or what are our?
Yes, so we have a Classified Employee Hiring Fair on June 16th from 10 o'clock until 3 o'clock. We would love for anyone to come. We've started signing people up through a Google form process, and we have 23 applicants already excited to interview with us. So we're looking forward to meeting potential Northwest employees.
And Transportation, we're, with the changes that you talked about that will be made next year, we're already working on those things and?
Yeah, so our Transportation Department is working on routing all the students. We have a Google form out for our families to elect Transportation if they are eligible for it, so we can route for the students who are going to be on the bus, not just every kid who's eligible. That helps us be more efficient. And so they are currently working through making the changes to the walkout zone that would reduce the number of routes we need, so that hopefully, they're working through that early summer, they'll be able to kind of nail that down. Our drivers come in in mid, like, the second week of August, and they pick their routes based on what's available and their seniority. So there will be some additional transition over the summer, but we'll know in early August about where we land in a final say.
For kids that, if your bus stop is changing than what it's always been, will there be any other communication to those families other than the bus pass, just so they, just to call it out, that some people may not even think to look on there?
Yeah, we'll continue to push out information about the changes once we have more information about the number of routes that might change, and then the bus passes are the key point because it identifies where your stop is and what time you need to be out there and five minutes before the assigned time.
Yeah.
At your place of safety.
Yes, yes. One other question I just thought of. The new, the moves for the redistricting, I saw Monford Heights had a kind of a welcome for kindergartners, and are all of the schools holding those that are picking up new students from other places?
Yeah, most of them are having a kind of an event where they can welcome their new families and they can kind of get to know the school. So there's been some outreach to the specific families who are impacted.
Great, okay, thanks. Passes five to zero.
All right, and I want to pause for a moment before we move on to the next agenda item. We do have a couple of administrative changes, and we want to, we typically call those out and we introduce our new administrators to the board. One of our administrative changes that was on the board tonight is Kristen Grody, who is going to be our new principal at White Oak Middle School. She was unable to be here tonight because she has an event in her current building and she wanted to be there with her kids. But she did have a vacation day today, so she actually stopped by the building, got to tour the building, meet some of the students, and meet the staff after school. So we are very excited to bring her into the district, and we'll bring her to a June meeting so that you guys can meet her. We also have Brad Watkins, who is changing from principal at Pleasant Run Middle School to our Director of Special Education, so we're excited about that shift and that change. We'll be posting that position and then obviously going through a process with the staff to find the next principal there. But tonight, we are excited to introduce that, we have Annie Brewer, who is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Corrin Elementary. Annie, if you don't mind standing. Annie actually has been in education for 13 years, and her interest in the field of education happened when she had the opportunity to volunteer in a kindergarten classroom when she was in Girl Scouts. So she earned her Bachelor's of Science in Middle Education with an emphasis on math and science from UC. She attended Xavier with a Master's in Education Administration, and she also obtained her principal license and intervention specialist license through Ohio. She began her career as a math and science teacher at an elementary school in Dayton, and she was nominated as Teacher of the Year and established the school's first science fair as a very young teacher. She joined Northwest in 2017, spent a year at Monford Heights as a 5th grade math and science teacher, and then moved to Colrain Elementary as her dean of students. She's been there for five years, working with Mr. Kleimer, and is excited to accept the role of Assistant Principal. She's worked there as the dean of students, and we're excited for Annie to move into this role. So Annie, congratulations.
Congratulations. And don't forget traffic control is also, or patrol is also on your resume.
Thank you.
Amy?
Good evening. First, I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of and approve the April 24th regular meeting minutes. We also have our financial report for the month of April. Our all funds balance was $84 million, and our general fund unreserved balance is $49 million. Our revenues year-to-date are at $92.7 million or at 93% of our projected revenue for the year, and our expenses are $76.7 million or 79% on target for the year. Our investment weighted average return is 3.77%, so it continues to keep climbing. We've actually earned $1.3 million this year in interest revenue, which has more than quadrupled what we usually get.
Awesome.
And our list of monthly- And our list of monthly bills is our routine bills, as well as we have some curriculum materials. We have renovations at Corin High School. We had an insurance deductible payment and some auxiliary and grant fund payments. Other items are our then and now certifications. We have three invoices for transportation repairs that need then and now certifications approved, as well as to accept, approve the fund and to appropriate the funds for the annual safety grant. This is for professional development that we get every year. And then we annually have to accept the amounts and rates. So this is the military rates that the County Auditor's Office and the Budget Commission uses for tax duplicates. And this year, the master facilities bonds that we passed in 2015 at 2.82 mils is rolling back to 1.9. It's being approved for tonight. So with that, I ask the Board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Question second. Any discussion? Pass is five to zero. Thanks, Amy.
And tonight, we have a resolution to advertise and accept bids for the summer 2023 pavement maintenance at Struble, Taylor, and P R E. Just to kind of make sure people understand, because some people ask why P R E, Taylor, and Struble and their newer buildings. But there are preventative maintenance that we have to do on buildings to ensure that we maintain them at the highest possible level. When we got the bond for those three buildings, we also looked at setting up funding streams so we could actually fund the preventative maintenance for those buildings to maintain them. And so this is part of that maintenance plan that we have for those three buildings to keep them maintained for the life of the building. So Superintendent recommends the Board approve the resolution expressing an intent to advertise and take bids for a construction contract for the summer 23 pavement maintenance at Struble, Taylor, and P R E, authorizing Superintendent Treasurer pursuant to applicable laws to proceed with commencement of such process as needed to solicit construction bids.
Need a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are there going to be any changes? Like, I know that at Northwest, last year, we changed entrances and exits, and I'm sure there's probably some striping that goes along with that. Is there any changes that we need to make this year that will be for next year?
Yeah, there, it's very minor. Obviously, they'll do the typical crack filling and sealing, but then on the striping plan, they'll change some of the playground features at the cafeteria sides of the building, and also where we've modified some of the arrival dismissal process. There may be some chain striping there, but it's, it'll be very minor.
I don't remember hearing a whole lot this year about, not like the first couple of years when the new school was open, just the chaos that was going on and the traffic and?
Oh, it's bad.
We've continued to modify the arrival and dismissal process to make it as efficient as possible, but it still does get congested. Struble gets very congested with going in and out of that neighborhood. Pippin Road still gets a little congested.
So banning at a wrong time of the day is not pretty.
But the biggest change to the lots themselves will be a P R E.
But I can attest, because I was directing traffic there last week, that traffic is moving better than it has in the past.
All right. Pass is five to zero.
Good evening. In 2018, I brought this number before you. And tonight, I want to bring you this number. As right, we're currently enrolling the class of 2036 into our elementaries for kindergarten next year. And these students will be taking on careers that are not yet imagined, and so we'll have to figure out a way to make sure they're prepared for when they graduate in 2036, to be able to handle the careers, the employment, the education, or the enlistment that they choose to do. We've also talked in the past about how instruction has changed from the past to where it is currently and where it may be even going in the future. So tonight, as I go over our five-year forecasts and our funding, just wanted you to keep those things in mind, because we always want to keep our students at the forefront of everything that we do, and to make sure that we are following our mission where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along their pathway to success. As part of our strategic plan, financial stability is one of our key pillars. And to maintain that, we want to keep in mind that we do have a community partnership, which says that we will not increase our expenses from year to year more than 3%, and that we will maintain a 60-day cash reserve balance, as well as since 2019, when we had our 7.5 mil operating levy, and our community asked us to come back more often with smaller levies, we look and plan for a rolling five-year, five-mil operating levy cycle, and we align our priorities, our resources to our instructional priorities. Internally, we're looking at how we're aligning our instructional priorities to make sure that we're spending at least 70% or more on instruction, because that is the core of what we do, and no more than 10% on any office or central office costs. So that includes the building offices, department offices, paper, the personnel, not only the administrators, but also the OPs and all of central office supports. We also have class-sized targets that we use for staffing, as well as a staffing plan, and we budget based on per pupil allocations, as well as square feet or per staff allocations. Currently, we have two operating levies, one in 2017 that expires in 2027, and one from 2019 that expires in 2029. Both of these would need to be renewed in order to maintain current operations. But also in 2021, as a Board, you passed a resolution that said that we would need an operating levy again in 2024, which that would be this November. There have been some changes since November of 2019. We reduced our operations by $2.6 million, as we promised our community when we asked for the 7.5 mil levy. Then the pandemic shut us down, and we rolled to have some savings from that spring, as well as we've had several unfilled positions, as well as turnover in the past several years. We've had some ESAR funding, or that was the federal pandemic relief funding, that we've been able to invest in our staff in our district so that we can maintain things in the future, as well as being able to shift some positions over to this funding to save it from the General Fund for a couple of years, knowing that we would have to move that back next year, as we've talked about for the past couple of years. There's been a new state funding formula, and interest rates continue to increase. So with that, let's talk about what our impact is on our financial stability. In 2018, one half of our revenue came from local property taxes, and one third came from the state. Now, two-thirds of our revenue comes from local property taxes, and a quarter comes from the state. So you can see the shift over time. We have an additional 11% that comes from things like tuition, interest, or the TIFs from green township, as well as prior year rebates such as Medicaid. Things that drive our revenue, enrollment is a huge driver of revenue. That's how the state determines state funding. New construction can give us a bump in our tax revenue with a year of property is built, and then after that, it rolls into the whole tax duplicate, as well as legislative changes such as the biennial budget, which is currently going through the process as we speak. When we look at our enrollment, our enrollment has maintained relatively stable for the past several years, and is projected to continue to be about the same. The biennial budget, so the new Fair School Funding Formula came into effect in fiscal year '22, and what this did is it allowed us to maintain $4 million a year from our students being educated elsewhere. So we have about 600 students. That annually, we would receive the state's portion, and then we would send the whole state and local out to where they were educated, whether they were community school, open enrolled, Peterson scholarships, things like that. The funding formula also has inputs for basic education based on 2018 costs, and it's 2023. So what this does is as valuation continues to increase, our community looks richer because the cost is staying lower. So we're trying, and we've been talking to both our representatives in the House and the Senate, that we need to increase those inputs in order to be able to have the inputs and the outputs, you know, aligned, so that it does not shift the burden onto local communities. The biennial budget, or in the new Fair Funding Formula, also phased it in over six years, so we're currently being funded at 33% for the state's funding portion, and it's looking to go to 50% with the next biennial budget start effective July 1. Some revenue changes that have occurred is, on our forecast, is this year, we collected $2 million in delinquent taxes. So that's one-time money, and it's not forecasted in the future to continue, as well as we will have update and reevaluation years during this five-year forecast. So fiscal year '23, which we collected in, calendar year '23, which we collected in calendar year '24, as well as '26, our update and reprisal years. And our interest rates have increased, so we've been able to earn an additional $1.3 million this year relative to the past. When we look at our local state and local shares, you can see back in 2019, we had a 60-40 split. 60% was from our local community and 40% came from the state. Now we're at 75-25. So the new funding formula, while they removed the students being educated elsewhere out of the formula, and we were able to keep those tax dollars here, what they did was it made us look richer. So the state is funding that directly, but they're also pushing the burden of the students that our community was always paying for more onto our local community. Currently, the state pays about $2,000 per student just for basic education. Anything above basic education is 100% locally funded, including maintenance of buildings, as well as any construction of buildings. And as you see by the end of the forecast, we're about down to $1,000 per student. In 2018, we had about 76% of our expenses were for personnel, and another 20% was for purchase services. Part of that purchase services was just the cost of the students being educated elsewhere. Currently, we have 77% of our budget is for personnel. Again, we are service industries, majority of our costs are spent on personnel, and our purchase services are down to 17% now that we are able to keep those dollars here for the students being educated elsewhere. Well, say we keep the dollars here, and that 600 students that we no longer have, we never had those students, but when you're looking at the number enrolled was a little around 8,000, we have to service around 9,700 students in different departments throughout the district. So there's more than just the butts and seats in the district that we do have to serve. Things that affect our expenses are, of course, inflation, and right now, we do have had high inflation, as well as special education costs and poverty are drivers of cost. Some expenditure changes that have occurred is we've had to shift from personnel costs to purchase service costs for our mechanics. We've had increases in subs, as well as assistants, because we've been unable to fill those positions. We've also had to add the cost of foster students and homeless students' transportation so that they can get to the school in which they reside. We've had an increase in supplies, and it's more of a timing difference. We would incoming one year and pay in the next, so it's not something projected throughout the forecast, as well as we had capital outlay costs in current year, offset by a grant. So the grant reduced some expenses, like utilities and personnel, but we were able to then provide, use that funds to purchase the radio system throughout the district. And then we have election expenses and other treasury fees. The election expenses are not only for the bond issue, but also board elections that the district has to pay for. So in the past, and we always talk about a levy cycle. So you have to ask for more than what you need when you pass a levy in order to break even in the middle of your cycle, and then use those additional funds from the early years in the later years to fund your operations. It's called the bowtie effect, and this is our current picture. As the years shift, and we start moving towards the right, the bowtie won't be as perfect, but right now, we have the perfect bowtie. So I just wanted to point out, we've talked about it for years, but we've never seen it. This is our funding cycle has been, the blue line is our revenue, and the red is our expenditures, and the green is our cash balance, as well as the black line is our cash balance policy. So you can see in 2019, when our last operating levy, we were dipping down to our cash balance policy, and then our revenue increased. And over time, our expenses are projected to increase more than our revenue coming in, which then starts spending down our cash balance carryover. This is just another way to see that we start deficit spending in fiscal year '24, which is next fiscal year, and we are looking to have a worsening cash balance, which will affect our financial stability over time out towards fiscal year '28. By fiscal year '28, we're looking at about 10% reduction in operations or need for increased revenue in order to maintain operations. In fiscal year '21, we reduced $2.6 million, and that was 2.8% of our budget. Just another picture to be able to show that over time, revenue starts out to be higher than expenses in the levy cycle, and as you go through the cycle, they meet, and then expenses start to increase over the revenue, because revenue's flat as it's passed. When we're looking at our community partnership and our 3%, fiscal year '24 does bump up over the 3%, but this is the year that we've been talking about for the past couple of years, that we're bringing back some positions that we were able to shift out to ESAR dollars for a few years and then come back, as well as we've had many open positions that are being, that were not in the expenditures in the previous year, in the current year and the previous year, but are projected in next year and the future as these positions are needed for operations. But over the five-year forecast as a whole, we're at 3.27%, so we're right at around our 3%, and we still have time to adjust things moving forward. When we look at our 60-day cash reserve policy, we meet that for four of the five years, and we dip below it slightly in the fifth year. Facilities is a part of our financial stability, and it's under our financial stability pillar in our strategic plan. Yeah. All of our buildings, except for Monford Heights and our three new elementary buildings, have been identified for replacement, and then they need safety and security upgrades. Any renovations that we do to any of our existing buildings require us to bring that building up to current codes and ADA requirements, which is why it's difficult to do small repairs when you have to then suddenly go in and do a larger-scale repair to bring things up to code, to current codes. Any repairs that we would do to our current facilities would also be reductive from any state credits that we'd be able to take advantage of to help our community save funds. We did have $46 million in deferred maintenance. We were able to use $6 million of our ESAR funds to do HVAC upgrades, and those upgrades were done in such a way that we were able to reutilize those into new facilities when we have them. So it's not a loss of funds, but a way to fix it now and then be able to use it again in the future. And currently, our middle schools are over capacity, so we're using all the spaces available within the building, the stage, the locker rooms for instruction and other student services. Our master facility plan was written and passed by the Board to address our $40 million in deferred maintenance, as well as the replacements of our facilities, that the cost to replace versus renovate is over 66%. Phase one, we replaced our three new elementary, from five to three, for our new elementary schools, and we, the committee recommended in November of '21 to replace three middle schools with two, to renovate any and update the remaining elementary schools, as well as determine what the community wants for high schools in the future. Currently, the committee is reconvened to relook at the plan and to dive into the high schools a little further, or a lot further. So with financial stability in our strategic plan, says we want to create a strong foundation of financial stability that ensures an optimal learning experience for all. In order to do that, we want to make sure that we are able to renew two operating levies, emergency levies that will be coming up for renewal or expire in the near future or during the life of the current five-year forecast, as well as instead of needing a operating levy in twenty twenty-four, which is this November, we have been able to push that out until about fiscal year twenty-eight. So I brought you this number at the beginning to keep this on your mind, our class of twenty thirty-six. We want to make sure that as a district, we align all our resources to our instructional priorities to make sure that all of our students get a quality education with supports and are prepared and ready to compete in the twenty-first century. Are there any questions?
That's the classroom that looks more like the classrooms. We have some of our buildings right now on the left side. Thanks, that's great presentation. Really appreciate it.
Is that Chris here in the second row?
You know, when I went to Monford Heights Elementary, it's not too far off. Mark, when I was at Monford Heights, we had desks that had the holes for the oil, or not the oil, the ink, ink wells. And you talk about, you know, the school district not upgrading desks. Those things are probably from nineteen twenty. So that picture was pretty accurate, Mark.
So we've had the treasurer and the superintendent ask the board to approve the five-year forecast.
I think it's great to point out that the five-year, that to not have the levy, that the hard work of, you know, obviously the pandemic helped a little bit, but the hard work and the stability that we've maintained, to not have to go to the community in twenty-four for that levy is a big thing, so thank you for the time.
Salute on that motion.
Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say, it's, we're always behind the APOL in this, on the finances, always, like I've never known it not to be, and I don't know if it ever, we won't be behind it at some point, you know. And we just keep kind of doing our same book of business, and I'm not saying that as we're being complacent, but like at some point, we have to redefine our district because it's, if we rely on the state to fund us appropriately, that's never going to happen. I think everybody is aware of that. So, you know, our footprint, our enrollment, all these things have kind of changed over the years. And so I throw a challenge out that we start thinking really, really out of the box on solutions to right-size our finances with, you know, I think the election that just passed was very clear what our community is saying about funding. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't a close election, but it was a statement, it was a very strong statement. You know, our buildings need replaced, but I just pose for all of us that we think about, that we just don't replace tick for tack and that we think of out of the box and be ready for the twenty thirty-six graduates that are coming. If we just keep doing the same thing, we're always going to be behind the state financial APOL. It's never going to change, so I've said it over and over before, you know, we need to look at whether we need to high schools, if we can consolidate middle schools, something in savings when, you know, such a large percentage is salaries and benefits, you know, the only place you can really impact financial change is in that category. And the only way to do that is to reduce bricks and mortar. And I think there's advantages to both, obviously, so that's my comment on all this. I mean, it's Amy, you do a great job putting this together, and I really appreciate your expertise in all this, but I think we have to really look at stuff just differently somehow, and maybe even potentially get, if there's consultants out there that can help us think differently or find ways of cost savings as well.
This is five zero. And then for informational purposes tonight, we have the Student Activities Handbook. There is no changes in it, we just need to approve it for the next year. It'll come back.
Okay.
Next meeting.
So I just want to kind of take a moment and kind of do a little bit of reflection on some of the things this year. I know a lot of times the things that hit the news and the media are all the negative things, and sometimes the negative are the loud voices, but I want to just take a moment and celebrate some of the great things that we, as a district, can be proud of because we have a lot of amazing, fantastic things that happen in this district on a daily basis. Our students are getting some amazing experiences as our teachers start to implement that portrait for graduate and align that with instructional practices in our district. Sherry Green's first grade class have been working to build a garden and learn about sustainability, and they've measured, determined the best time to plant, care for plants, they're watching them grow, they're hoping for some good weather to keep them going. Northwest High School math teacher Kelly Young has been working with her geometry students on a putt-putt project where they're using all of the angles and geometry to really build a putt-putt course, and our Taylor fifth graders are able to come over and actually play the course and see if they can get a hole-in-one on some of those things that have been designed by our kids. Corrin High School has been working on a senior portrait. Seniors have been showcasing and reflecting on all of the experiences, electives, and extracurricular things that have happened throughout their high school career that have helped form them into the person they are today and who they're growing into tomorrow. And Monford Heights and P R E kindergarten students have been able to really focus on animal adaptation. They've gone on field trips to the zoo, they've had experts from Hamlin County Parks come in and work with the kids. They were actually here and presented and talked about that, but our kids and our staff are working directly with community members and business leaders to bring experiences to the classroom that move our kids toward that vision of being prepared for that twenty thirty-six number that Amy shared. We also have staff who are just creating experiences for kids. Struble has a multicultural club, and they held their first event, and they livestreamed it through the entire elementary school so that all the classrooms could watch each other, celebrate all of the rituals and family cultures that are present in that building. We have Northwest High School just celebrated their top ten of their graduating class. Corrin High School just celebrated their summa cum laude graduates in a ceremony. We had two students who were honored at the Chamber of Commerce for their business entrepreneurship through Butler Tech. We have every building who has a teacher that was nominated as a Teacher of the Year that represents the excellence in educators that we have in this district that are doing the kinds of things that are listed here. We have celebrated our Staff of the Year, so not just the teachers, but all of the staff in the building who also support the students and the operations, and so we've celebrated a staff member of every building with, you know, their excellence and their contribution to student experience. We have a teacher who is just nominated to the Hamlin County Celebrate Excellence Award from Struble, and we have a teacher who's been nominated as an Ohio Teacher of the Year candidate. So we have a lot of amazing things that are happening in this district, and we have a lot of successes that we need to continue to capitalize on, celebrate, and amplify because those are the things that are more prominent, more prevalent in our district than some of the other things that might get more attention. And so I just wanted to call out that as we end this year, we have a lot to be proud of, a lot to celebrate, and we have a lot to look forward to because it only gets better as we move into next year. So I'm very excited about that. And just to kind of round that out with celebrations, Monday and Tuesday are graduations, so Northwest High School graduates Monday, and Corrin High School graduates Tuesday, and we're looking forward to some really stellar events to really capitalize and give these students the capstone experience that they deserve as they move on to the next chapter. So just a little bit of celebration tonight.
Do you know, as the, with the spring state testing and that finishing up, where we're at compared to where we were this time last year?
We are beginning to get some of the scores to come back, so in early summer, we'll do a presentation to the board about where we are. We have some internal metrics we can use with internal data that we track through MAP, and we're seeing some exciting growth in our early literacy scores. All of the work that we've been doing with the science of reading and the letters training that our teachers have been going through is really starting to pay off. So June fifth, we'll have a presentation around the science of reading and the impact that's having on our early literacy scores, and then once we get additional state data from the state assessments our kids have taken, we'll do that in either late June or July, once we get all the data, and we'll give an update. But some of the preliminary data that's coming in, we're seeing some, some growth happening, some things that we can continue to celebrate that show that what we're doing is creating positive outcomes on the back end from a data perspective. We still have a ways to go, but we are making progress, and we're going to get there.
I know I was in a classroom a couple of weeks ago, and a teacher said her entire class did pass their goal of what they were from the previous one, so anytime we can
We have some amazing successes that we're going to be able to celebrate once everything's finalizing comes in, so there's amazing successes that we've had, some teachers in classrooms that have moved kids tremendous amounts of growth in one year and have a hundred percent of their kids passing state tests. So we, we do have some celebrations that we're going to bring to you once that's all finalized.
Look forward to that. Thanks, Daryl. Board member comments? Chris?
Okay, thanks, Nicole. Amy? Amy's going to put up some pictures here. Amy, if you gave the first one. Folks, this is from the county auditor site. You can see the blue line is the property lines for White Oak Middle School, and I'm kind of dovetailing off what Mark said before about approaching things differently because we can't do a third time what we just did. We, you all know the results. If it were up to me only and I had to decide tonight, what I would do, we do need to replace those three schools, but I would do them one at a time. And what I've done with these pictures is to look at current White Oak Middle School, and there is a big hill behind White Oak Middle School. It's a great sled riding hill, by the way. We would have to grade that, but that field below, the beauty of White Oak is, and we could probably do it at Colrain also, but that's so, it's just not a good location for, if we went to two middle schools. If we made White Oak a super middle school, we could build a new school at the bottom and then possibly buy that field next to the church, which they do not use. I'm over there all the time, never seen anybody ever use that field. All they do is cut the grass, and that would give us three exits if we bought that. If we did build a school on the lower field, we'd have a Blue Rock Road exit, a Randland Drive exit, and Jessup Road exit, which would really be great for traffic, having three exits. So that's the current situation, and what I did, Amy, if you'll go to the second picture, moved the school down, same size. You can see that current school fits on the field with a nice parking area or the circular parking in front, and then on top of the graded hill would be a new parking lot and perhaps a soccer field, and then the current football field, soccer field over there and walking trail remains. So we would have to, again, that hill is so steep, we'd have to do something, but it could be done at least at one end, and you can see there's space on the south side of the building where we could, you know, put another huge addition and maybe go to, we could just, there's land out there to build a nice school. That's what I'm trying to get at. And if we were to run a smaller levy, perhaps next year in the primary, I've talked to a lot of no voters, and they said if we were to do it in batches, they would be much more likely to support it. And this doesn't help, we'd have to do something with enrollment for, we've got issues at Pleasant Run Middle School, but, I mean, we got to think outside the box, and we've got all this land here, and again, we could add another two acres if we bought that property from the church, and they actually have another big piece of land behind the church that they hardly use. So there is a creek there, which we'd have to watch out for, but, you know, you put up a fence and high enough so the kids can't get to it. I've never seen it flood once. It's never come out of its banks. So that's just something that I wanted to bring up, but we're going to have to do something different. If we do something the same, we're going to get the same results, and that's all I have.
Appreciate your time, Mark.
I just want to say, good job on the five-year forecast, and I know a lot of people don't understand it, but if they could sit down with you, if you could explain it to them if they got questions or whatever, that would be awesome. Because, you know, everything that you project, all it takes is the biennial budget to come out, and then that throws everything out of whack when they take money away or don't give you enough money, and that's, that's the, I think Mark brought it up before, it's just the way it is. But I just want to congratulate ahead of time the graduates on Monday and Tuesday from Northwest to Colrain, so we'll be up at Mallett Hall for that, and good luck to everybody, and that's it.
Thanks. Matt?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I attended the Butler Tech graduation on Monday. Congratulations to all those students, both from our Northwest and Colrain and the other participating Butler Tech schools. And as Jim said earlier, Teresa, I'm not going to try and say her last name, the senior from Corrin High School, did a fantastic job Monday with the master ceremonies, and good luck and congratulations to the coming graduates for Monday with Northwest High School and Colrain on Tuesday.
This is always a fun time of year. I, the past few years that I've been president and I've handed diplomas out, it always, I always reflect on every single young adult that crosses the stage, there is a significant story with every single one of them. And, you know, I encourage people to take time and think about some of the challenges. We still have people who, they're the first high school graduate in their family. In twenty twenty-three, that still occurs. It is quite defeat, and I'm kind of piggybacking on you, Daryl, that, you know, it seems like school districts are punching bags with community and people, but for every ill thing that may go on, there's a thousand very, very good things that go on. Some of them can't be put into a particular matrix, but you can still see the blessing and you can still kind of see the miracle involved in all of it. I want to thank our staff for another year. You know, certainly, I don't know if there'll ever be a year without a trial or especially moving forward, but thank you for that. I'm hoping next year, a lot of the kinks and bugs that we need to work out are getting worked out. And just congratulations to our graduates coming up. If you reflect back and think of the amount of work that's gone in to get, like, they're five years old, going to school the first day to now is just amazing. It's an amazing success.
Also like to congratulate all of our graduates and also all of our retirees. We're losing some, some great teachers and great staff who've poured into our kids for many years. Thank all of our teachers and staff who've kept our children safe and dry and have done their best to keep these buildings standing all year, and just, they show up day in and day out and answer the call for many students. And just also recognize our PTAs for all the work they've done this year. I've seen awesome events and just the, the things that they do to help enrich the students and the staff in the schools. I know many of them are looking for new members next year, so if anybody is watching and interested in volunteering, there's many ways you can get involved. And then just thank you to all the families and everyone that showed up to the meetings and the students that have presented each, each month, and just really appreciate and enjoy seeing that, so, thank you. And next, we will go to executive session. When we return, there will be no further business, so no one needs to stay. I need a motion a second to move to executive session.
Do we need to read out the reasons out loud why?
They're in the board agenda, but it's for the Employment Dismiss or Disciplinar Investigation against Public Employment.
investigation against a public employee or matters that are required to be kept confidential by federal law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that passes five to zero. Thank you.